Call the City Council meeting in order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining, Germaine, Lamoore, Felder, Whitman, Ike Goangeli, Mayor Clark.
I ask that we all please rise for the invocation. Remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Guide our working together, give us wisdom to make the right decisions, your understanding to listen to each other, and your compassion to promote the peace and welfare of the residents of this community.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, next item, please.
The next item would be any amendments to the agenda.
Mr. Pastu, I believe something regarding this.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to ask that you add an item to the agenda after item 2688 for city attorney presentation regarding CPM Properties LLC.
Okay, there's a request that needs a motion and a second. Council, Councilman Lamoore.
Yes, Your Honor, I move that we amend the agenda to add an item after 2688 for city attorney presentation regarding CBM Properties LLC.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Lamoore, supported by Councilman Felder to amend the agenda as stated. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining, Germaine, Lamoore, Felder, Whitman, Mayor Clark. The next items are citizen comments not related to an agenda item, and I have, oh, an email that was requested to have read into the record.
The email that you have, and then we'll see if there's those present wish to have made comments.
Okay. This was sent from Robert Campbell Town, and it was actually sent after the last council meeting on Wednesday, February 19th. Dear Mayor and City Council, I recently read about the requests from Waste Management to renegotiate their city contract for trash collection, and I'm very upset about it. The Monroe News reported that Stevens' disposal was the winning bidder in 2018, but we remained loyal to Waste Management. Now Waste Management wants to change what they promised us, which will give us less options and result in more profit for the company. They stated that the economic conditions have changed, which is unfortunate to them. However, economic conditions change all the time, and there are no guarantees for success. If there were, we would all be in the garbage business. The economic conditions of our city have too changed, as DTE will be paying less. Will we get any free rides or bailouts because of that? Likely not. In addition, Waste Management cites safety issues. These types of trucks have been used for decades, and there's no sudden or immediate sense of urgency that did not exist when they originally proposed their solution in 2017. Nothing to me appears to have changed except their bottom line. I would like to ask that a city resolution be implemented that declares that there will be no changes to our existing contract with Waste Management, and that the city expects the level of service that was promised to us by Waste Management to remain the same for the remainder of the term. Renegotiating Waste Management's contract is not fair to the taxpayers or to the other companies who took the time and resources to provide a bid. I am not aware of any imminent bankruptcy to Waste Management if this contract is not renegotiated, but I am aware that our city faces many financial hurdles. Will you please put forth a resolution that will end this debacle? If Waste Management wants to propose something else, they should do so for the next round of bids where all companies can be free to do so.
Thank you. Other comments from those present here this evening? Citizens' comments not related to an agenda item. There's also the opportunity at the close of the meeting for comments if there wish to be any. Seeing no comments. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is item under council action, item 2688, ordinance number 20-002, floodplain management up for its first reading and scheduling of the public hearing date.
Any comments, Ms. Pastu? I know we talked briefly at the... Okay, if not, it's before the council.
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Vining.
I move that the city council approve the first reading of ordinance 20-002, proposed amendments to chapter 353 flood hazard areas of the code of the city of Monroe, schedule the public hearing and second reading for adoption at its March 16, 2020 regular meeting, and that the attached resolution be held over for adoption at the March 16, 2020 meeting as well, and be approved simultaneously with the ordinance.
Motion by Councilwoman Vining, supported by Councilwoman Whitman, on item 2688, the ordinance number 20-002, floodplain management as stated. Seeing no comments. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes. Germaine, Lamoore, Felder, Whitman, Mayor Clark.
Yes. Next item, please.
Can you read the...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm getting ahead of myself. We need to read something here first.
Ordinance 20-002, chapter 353 flood hazard areas, and ordinance to amend chapter 353 flood hazard areas of the code of the city of Monroe.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, next item is, will be assigned a number when we take this back to finish processing it, but it is an item, it's item to have the city attorney presentation regarding CBM Properties LLC.
Thank you. I guess we'll have the presentation, and we'll see. I don't think we need, because we've added the agenda, so.
Yeah, it's fine.
Fine.
Honorable Mayor, Councilman Matthew Buds, City Attorney. As we have discussed on February 24, 2020, the city obtained an administrative search warrant dealing with a property owned by CBM Properties LLC after the property owner's representative failed to take any action to obtain a certificate of occupancy or zoning compliance permit. Also based on information that was provided to the city, there was a suggestion that the occupation and use of that property was in violation of both state law and local ordinance. Upon the execution of a search warrant, a large number of cannabis plants, believed to be cannabis plants, were discovered at the property owned by CBM Properties LLC. The property owner's representative indicated that this was industrial hemp as background for the council to be industrial hemp. The plant material must have a THC content below 0.3% on a dry weight basis. Additionally, state law requires that a processor handler of industrial hemp have a state-issued license. Notably, that license must be provided to law enforcement immediately upon a demand from a law enforcement officer. The city has repeatedly requested that CBM Properties LLC through its representative obtain a certificate of occupancy for its occupancy of the property, to obtain a zoning compliance permit, and also to produce its processor handler license, which has come from Detective Lieutenant Lindsay in that request on at least three different occasions. To date, the property owner has not responded or complied with any of those issues, but has in fact sent out numerous correspondence to representatives of the city, to the county of Monroe, and also to the Monroe News complaining about the actions taken by the city's building inspector Kent Clemms. The communications, I will say, are nonproductive and include a number of times indication of his belief that he does not need to obtain any certificate of occupancy or zoning compliance permit, and the requests for a processor handler license for industrial hemp have been ignored. I will say, based on the photographs that we have been presented from the execution of the search warrant, a few of which I'll scroll through here, it appears evident to me that some type of a plant processing facility is in use and that the building is being put into a business production at the facility. And for all of those reasons, it's entirely proper that the city continue to proceed forward and attempt to obtain compliance from the property owner at this point in time. Given the fact that there has been no productive response in terms of action to secure the necessary certificate of occupancy, zoning compliance, or to provide the necessary state license for this, if it is in fact industrial hemp, it would be my recommendation that city council authorize my action to file a complaint and a motion for injunctive relief against CBM Properties LLC. And unless there are any questions, that's the conclusion of my presentation for today.
Any questions from city council for city attorney Buds? I want to see if there's any... Councilwoman Germaine?
You said that it's getting tested. How long will the testing take to get the results?
We believe it will be a number of days before we will know that. That test will then establish whether in fact it qualifies as industrial hemp. My position is even if you accept the property owner's representative's view that it's industrial hemp, there needs to be a state license for that, and that has not been provided. So even taking the property owner at their word as to what the plant material is at this point in time, it would still be my recommendation that we proceed forward.
Other questions for Mr. Buds? Very good. So it's been presented from administration and city attorney regarding this occurrence and where it stands, and at this point, Mr. Buds is looking for some action by council to move forward as requested. Councilman Lamoore?
Yes, Your Honor, I make a motion that the city attorney be authorized to file a complaint and motion for injunctive relief against CBM Properties LLC.
There's, yeah, CPM. Okay, there's a motion by Councilman Lamoore, supported by Councilwoman Germaine, to take the action stated through the recommendation of legal counsel or city attorney, Mr. Buds. Other comments? Comments from those present? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining, Germaine, Lamoore, Felder, Whitman, Mayor Clark.
Next item, please.
The next item is the consent agenda, and for item B, approval of payments to vendors, the amount should read $1,879,881.69. 1-879-881.69.
Thank you. There's items on the consent agenda. Any items on the consent agenda that council wishes to have pulled for further discussion? Any items from council members? Any items on the consent agenda, those present here this evening wish to have pulled for further discussion? Seeing none, a motion would be in order.
Your Honor?
Councilman Felder.
I would motion that all items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, and the recommendations carried out.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Felder, supported by Councilwoman Vining, that all items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, and carried out. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining, Germaine, Lamoore, Felder, Whitman, Mayor Clark.
Yes.
I have no further items, Your Honor.
Next item is council comments. We'll start with Councilwoman Vining. It is March.
I just want to say I'm very excited about the forward movement with the Labor Park project, and I can't wait to see shovels in the ground. I'm very excited. And that's all, Your Honor.
Very good. Thank you. And Councilwoman Germaine?
In Monroe Magazine in yesterday's paper, a member of the DDA board, Deb Steelgrave, had a nice article about her business, and it was very complimentary, and I congratulate her on the article. It was well done. And don't forget to move your clocks forward, because daylight savings time starts Saturday. Sunday, I should say. That's all, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilman Lamoore?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Regarding the comments that were brought forward tonight from Robert Campbell Town regarding Waste Management, I agree wholeheartedly with him, and he is just one of many that I've heard from constituent-wise, and if I have anything to do with this, I agree that the contract should be carried out and abided by by Waste Management. So in my opinion, that's something that the city council will take very seriously. The contract is very serious, and we definitely want them to abide what they have drawn up and what we have signed, both duly. That's it, Your Honor. Thank you.
Councilman Felder.
Yeah, a couple of quick things. Hope everyone's able to go out and enjoy the weather. It's certainly getting nice. I attended a municipal finance seminar over the weekend, and I just wanted to thank the city for being able to make those sorts of professional enrichment opportunities possible so that we're able to better serve our community. I think those are really positive. So thank you, guys, for making that happen. Mr. Campbell Town reached out to me, and I believe he reached out to the rest of council as well. I responded to him essentially saying that I don't believe that any action was pending before the council at this time, and that I didn't believe any resolution was necessary. He replied to me, and I received his okay to share his comments. Andrew, thank you for your email and common sense approach to the situation. I'm so glad that we can see the ridiculousness of what Waste Management is proposing, and he appreciates being able to reach out to us for any further issues resulting in his own personal trash collection issues. So I hope that that largely put a rest to the issue. I think that it is very apparent in the community that the residents know that we are looking out for their best interests, even when contractors are coming before us and asking to revisit negotiations or contracts that have already been signed and closed on. I think that when we take the time to sit down and talk with people, they get it. They know that we're on their side. So, thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you. Councilwoman Whitman?
Yes, I had the pleasure of attending the 10-year anniversary for the Learning Bank, which it was a wonderful turnout, and it was held at the Opportunity Center. And it was just really a good day. Everyone was excited about being there. They're excited about the changes, and I won one of the baskets. So I was thrilled. So it was a good day, and it's really nice to see that spring is coming and people are starting to get out of the bad weather flock. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Very good. I just have a few comments. I'll also follow up on an activity over the weekend at the Opportunity Center at the ALCC. Was the Health Day or Health Fair was held there, and it was, I thought it was well-attended for the kind of a startup. Not only was it about physical health, but it was about mental health and also nutrition. So there was four or five, four tables, I believe, and they started getting into the activities, aerobics and that, just to get started, and I left shortly after, though. But it was a great opportunity for the center to show some things that are going on there. My thanks to MCOB for that. A couple of the comments, as we've talked about before, we have a sister-city relationship with Ho Fu Japan, and that's through our student exchange program, where five students from Japan come to Monroe and five students from Monroe go to Ho Fu Japan. I'm only making this now. It's kind of made it before, but the student applications can still be submitted through the Friday of this week, March 6. And you can go through the website, and MIFA is the organization, our nonprofit that partners with us, which is Monroe International Friendship Association, and the email is MIFA. It's M-I-F-A-Monroe.com, or you can call 734-755-6767 if you know of a student that would think they want to make that travel and represent and be an ambassador for our city. And these can come from students in high school, countywide. It can apply to be a representative. The Census 2020 is coming up. I mentioned it once before, but I just want to bring it up to speed to where we are with this today. First, I want to let, as I said before, those interested in working with the U.S. Census can apply, and it is, they have jobs in which they'll pay. The email address is 2020census.gov/jobs, and it can be found, additional information can be found on their website. And there's also going to be a training for those called enumerators will be coming to Monroe. There's two groups on May 6 and 13, and then May 7 and 14. I bring that up because if somebody does wish to participate and is accepted, you may want to be mindful of these days. Thanks to the, I know that at the fire station, they'll be held at the community room at the fire station where these training sessions with the enumerators will be held on those dates, and I think it's a great opportunity for those to kind of learn about that as well. And even if you're not going to volunteer to be a participant of the leadership on this, there's always opportunities for those that want to volunteer and help out with this and can learn something through the website on that as well. Last comment about the Census 2020. It is very important. You know, some people are fearful, it seems to be, when you should not be. The census data that's collected is retained and not shared. It's used for purposes primarily of how revenue comes back from the federal government to the local jurisdictions. And I just was at a meeting and talked about, for every person not counted, that community loses $1,800 or more per person. So you can see how quickly that adds up if people just fail to get, are the hard to count, as they say. Sometimes it's elderly, and sometimes it's the youth. So the mailings are starting to come out here in March. Please accept those, complete them, send them back in. There's ways to do it online now. There's different direction will be done as they get through the month of March. And the other part of the census, of course, sets the number of congressional members that we represent in Michigan in Washington. So as we've lost representatives because of population, everybody is important to be counted and hope that everybody will be looking for their census items. Just a brief comment to the, a couple that were made regarding Waste Management. I think their answers are correct, that in fact, that councils and the administration is not taking any action at this point. Just sharing that out. However, do accept the information and get handed to the administration. Administration is still working and looking at that contract, having discussion, and see what, if any, comes back to city council. And then we'll be taking action at that appropriate time as opposed to moving forward with any type of resolutions that we don't, until we get the information, know where the discussion is. I think it'd be premature to take any action. So just a comment about that, that I know administration is still working and looking at that and having some additional, we'll have a follow-up with the city council regarding that topic. That's the items I have. Clerk, Treasury LaVoy?
I just have a few, Your Honor. I wanted to remind the council members who are participating in the public accuracy test tomorrow. It's at 8 o'clock here, 8:00 a.m. here at City Hall, and just come to the clerk's desk, and then we will go upstairs. And of course, that's open to anyone else, and we'll have, make sure that it's posted. It already is noticed, but we will help you if you should come and you want to watch the proceedings. They'll begin at 8:00, and we'll direct you to the room where that will be taking place. Also wanted to just remind people that if you voted already with your absentee ballot and your candidate drops out before the primary, you can request a new ballot, but you must ask us to spoil your ballot and request the new ballot in writing. And you can do that up until Election Day, and then on Election Day, there is no mechanism in the law for us to change it. So you can vote absentee, you can change your mind for a little less than a week now, about a week now. But then on Election Day, you cannot do that. Let's see, what else? We will be open until 5:00 on Friday to mail ballots out. So if somebody wants to stop by after 4:30 or get back into town from your job about 4:30, 5:00, we will be here until 5:00 on Friday. Then we will be here from 8:00 until 4:00 on Saturday to issue absentee ballots and to take in absentee ballots. We've been getting this a lot, too. Just a reminder that you, especially for husbands and wives, brothers and sisters, we have people come in sometimes and they want to take their ballot for themselves. They've requested their absentee ballot and would also, you know, while they're there, take it for their wife or their partner, et cetera. And we can't do that. So if you turn in an absentee application for your spouse or someone living in your household, we will end up having to mail the ballot to them. And it's just an important point to remember. You can register. Now, we're in the 14-day window, so if you want to register to vote, and you can come into the clerk's office, you must bring proof of residency, and we will register you. And of course, voter registration, we can register you now through, up till 8:00 on Election Day, but you have to come into the clerk's office to do it. So we've been posting some of this online. It's on the Secretary of State's website. Jody's been really great about adding it to our Facebook page. And of course, if you have any questions, you can call 734-384-9140, and that is the clerk's office. Or you can email elections@monroam-i.gov, and that comes directly to our office as well. So I know it's a little complicated, but there's just a couple of things I wanted to just go over with everyone. There are a lot of opportunities to vote, and we're trying to increasingly make it easier for those that are registered to vote to get into our office, but we still need certain things in writing, and we still need to see IDs and things like that. So I just want to give everyone a heads up.
Just a reminder for the presidential primary, the date for this?
Oh, March 10. It's March 10, Tuesday. So it's a different Tuesday than we're used to. Usually, it would be tomorrow. And there are elections happening tomorrow, but not ours. Ours is the following, March 10. Polls open at 7:00 a.m. We did not consolidate polling locations, so if you go to Woodcraft Square to vote every election, you still go there this time. All of the polling locations are where they usually are. And polls close at 8:00. As long as you're in line by 8:00, you will be given a ballot, and you will be able to vote at the precinct. And then anyone who registers to vote that day will have the option of voting absentee in here in the clerk's office or going to their polling location to vote.
Thank you. Mr. Pastu, comments?
I don't have anything tonight to add.
Other comments, citizens' comments, present? Any comments from those present here this evening? Any comments from those present? Seeing none. Councilman Lamoore?
Make a motion that we go into close executive session for the purpose of review of pending litigation, land acquisition, and attorney-client privileges, privileged correspondence.
And we have a note. Yeah, we have a note. I'm looking for it that has additional information. Mr. Buds is going to, at the top.
Apologize. Let me restate that.
Correct with this information.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we go into close executive session, discuss the matters of pending litigation involving the following parties, Stacy Hall and Leslie Poppy.
There's a motion of support. Mr. Buds?
Your Honor, I apologize if I may also suggest that we include the topic of land acquisition as another reason for the close session and from the agenda. Because there would be no motion, we addressed attorney-client privilege communication in the prior special meeting, so there's not that need for that item. So I'd request a friendly amendment to the motion to also include land acquisition, but for purpose of the record, exclude attorney-client privilege communication.
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to take out my motion regarding attorney-client privilege correspondence and keep in the land acquisition.
And there's a motion in support. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lamoore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. So we'll go into close session at this time and be back. Yes. So we'll go into closed session at this time and be back.